Good evening. Welcome to the regular May 6th meeting of the Planning Commission. It appears we're not going to do a roll call. It appears that all commissioners are present. The meeting is called to order. Commissioner Leah, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I will. All right. Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, indivisible,
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
We did.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Posed. Hearing none. The agenda is approved. We are on to announcements and introductions. Before I ask if any of the commissioners have any announcements, I do want to say that I really need to thank the staff and all commissioners and the community for the amazing hard work that was put into the recent two commission meetings relating to the West Village project. And I'm sorry to have missed it, but everyone did an amazing job in my absence, and I wanted to thank you all. Okay, do any of the commissioners have any announcements, introductions, anything? I don't. Hang on for a second because I don't see everybody. All right. Nothing? Dennis, yes?
I just want to wish all the moms out there and grandmoms, everybody else a Happy Mother's Day coming up on Sunday. We have too little to celebrate, so that's one of the good things going on.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we are on to oral communications and public comment. This is the portion of the meeting for citizens wishing to address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone? Do we have anyone in the audience?
Good evening, Chair. We do have two people in the audience. Neither of them have raised their hands, and I'll note that they are here for the next item, which is the ARP selection.
Okay. All right. Then let's move on to consent items, and we have approval of the minutes of February 18th.
I will move approval, but I have a question before I ask anybody to vote on it. Page three, item five, reports from the Planning Commission. I'm trying to remember the context of what I was described as highlighting because it says Commissioner Washburn highlighted the Los Virginas Malibu Council of Governments, Metro Transportation Authority, and a bunch of other stuff. And can someone remind me what the context of that was?
I think you were just generally commenting on the value of people participating. Commissioners and members of the public participating in some of these things that you had highlighted.
Okay.
That's what I recall.
That sounds familiar. Yeah.
I mean, it just says highlighted, so for what purpose? I have no idea, but that makes sense because we do have allies in dealing with the matters of community affairs. So it's reported accurately, but very tersely on the minutes, so I move approval of the minutes unless there's other needs to correct or add.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Right. Hearing no opposition, the minutes of February 18th are approved. Five zero. All right, the next item on the agenda is the selection of Architectural Review Panel member, and we are looking for a member to serve as an alternate to the Architectural Review Panel. Jaclyn, I understand that you have a presentation for us?
Yes, I do. Good evening, commissioners. I'll go ahead and share my screen, pull up the PowerPoint. Okay, so tonight we offer you the selection of an alternate member for our Architectural Review Panel. And the Architectural Review Panel members are appointed by the Planning Commission. The panel is made up of five members, three of which are regular members and two are alternates. The ARP members are persons who, as a result of their training, experience, and attainments, are qualified to analyze and interpret architectural and site planning information. One of the members of the panel must be a licensed architect, and there is a preference for residents of Calabasas, although the panel is also open to people who do business in the city. The purpose of the ARP is to preserve and enhance the beauty of the city's natural and built environment by encouraging citywide consistent building scale and character, discouraging development of individual dominant buildings to ensure that development is attractive and in character of the city, to encourage structures which contribute to neighborhood and community, and to ensure that site landscaping provides visually pleasing spaces for structures to ensure that landscaping blends harmoniously with the natural landscape, that landscaping supports the design and function of structures, and that views of structures from offsite are softened or screened. The ARP also encourages the highest quality of architectural design, green building, and construction methods, which are the least disruptive to the site and to the community. And the ARP also balances private prerogatives and preferences with the public's interest and welfare. There are a number of things that guide the ARP's design guidance. The first one being the 2030 general plan, specifically the community character element. There are also several chapters within the Development Code, including the scenic corridor overlay chapter, the chapter on landscaping, on lighting, signs, as well as oak tree regulations. And then there are several sections within the General Property Standards chapter, including cluster development standards, community standards, design considerations, fences, walls, and hedges, freeway corridor development, height measurement and limit exceptions, hillside and ridgeline development, screening, and undergrounding of utilities. The ARP meetings are open to the public, and they take place one or two afternoons per month. Currently, the regularly scheduled meetings are the fourth Friday of every month at 2:30 PM. And ARP meetings are required for all new homes in the city, any projects that are located within the scenic corridor, any larger additions and residential zones, any projects in HM or RR zoned properties, as well as any commercial projects, either new commercial or alterations to existing commercial buildings, and multifamily projects. And ARP review is also required for projects that require community development forums. Currently, the panel consists of four members. Our fifth member recently resigned, and so now the position that we have open is the alternate. So the panel currently consists of Ken Stockton, who is a licensed architect, Will Shepherd, who is a licensed architect and engineer, Camille Merdetian-Armen, who is a licensed architect, and Shado Maradi, who is a licensed architect. So currently made up of four licensed architects. So currently, for our selection process, we have a total of two candidates. We received two applications, and we have one position open, which is to serve as the alternate member on the panel. At this point, I'll turn it over to the Chair to decide what she wants to do next, but we do have a few suggestions. If you wanted to maybe have the two candidates summarize their experience and credentials first. And if any of the commissioners had questions regarding their knowledge of general design, and if you would like them to, we also have a few pictures prepared of hypothetical architectural projects, so we can bring those up and have them make their suggestions regarding what changes they would make if hypothetically this project was brought before them at an ARP meeting.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Jaclyn.
You can stop sharing my screen so that we can bring the two candidates into the meeting, and then I can start sharing again if you'd like to show them the pictures.
All right, thank you. Yes, let's have the candidates come forward, please.
Do you want to bring both at once or one at a time?
Let's bring one at a time. And we're going to ask that they each explain a bit about their respective backgrounds and experience, and tell us a little bit about themselves. And then we'll move on to about this for a minute. I think that we should have each come forward, one at a time, give us a little bit of background, and then we will circle back regarding an analysis of the project that we have for them, but I think that it's best to hear a bit about them each first.
Okay, so I'll start with, if you're okay with it, with Greg's on the top of my Zoom list.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so Greg is now in here as a panelist.
All right. If you'll unmute yourself.
There you go. Hello, how are you?
Very good, thank you. You want to tell us a bit about yourself, please?
Sure. My name's Greg Manesian, and I more or less grew up in the San Fernando Valley. Currently, or of late, my children attend LVUSD, and I volunteer there. I was on the PTA. And I'm currently on the LVUSD Oversight Committee. So I like to contribute to the community. That said, I'm currently a resident of Calabasas. I've been so for nearly three years. But grew up and lived in the West Valley. As a profession, I'm a builder, and at this time, I'm working for a developer that's out of state overseeing his construction of 50-plus units in Beverly Hills condominium units. Professionally, I do primarily high-profile projects in Los Angeles. I don't want to name them all, but they're very large, and you'd know the names of them. I'll spare you. But that said, I'm interested in giving back to my community, and I feel that my 20-plus years of experience in construction and development will be contributing factor.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
Not at all. I was gonna say I'm open to answering any specific questions that you may have.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any specific questions? Commissioner Mueller.
Okay, yes, I just actually was curious, Greg, in these projects that you oversee, are you in effect the general contractor?
No, I work on this project in particular. I'm working for the owner directly as the owner's representative.
I see.
I oversee the general contractor.
I see, and that's pretty typical in your profession?
Pretty typical, yes. Yeah, currently, but I did work for large general contractors in the past.
I see. And have you done any work specifically in Calabasas?
I have not. My work, I specialize in hotels and high-rises, so it's primarily downtown LA. This one's in Beverly Hills. I've done some large projects in North Ridge and North Hollywood of late.
Thank you.
And are you a licensed contractor?
I am a licensed contractor, but I don't practice.
What licenses do you hold?
The general contracting license.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, yes. Dennis, you're muted. Dennis, you're muted.
I'm about to unmute.
There you go.
Nice to meet you, Greg, and thanks for stepping up. Do you have any future plans to deal in the arena of either Calabasas or the neighborhood?
No, I is purely, I'd like to give back to the community, really. I don't have any future plans of any kind of construction building or anything of that nature.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions? Commissioner Leah?
Yes. Greg, you said your work primarily is in high-rise hotels, high-rise buildings. Do you think that would be useful here in the city of Calabasas where we really have none of that?
Well, I mean, that's what I do construction-wise. I mean, right now, I'm Beverly Hills, who has very tight restrictions on development and landscaping and everything that goes with it. But, you know, I mean, I like to beautify the community. I know pretty things and like to contribute with, I guess, landscape. You know, I don't know what mostly we would be reviewing, but I assume that it's landscaping and things to both enhance the community and residences and surrounding construction. And you know, I have an eye for that. I mean, I've been looking at plans, and virtually all projects have a lot of landscaping, beautification, and city restrictions that we accommodate.
Thank you, Greg.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Michael, can you admit the other candidate, please?
Yes, hold on a second. All right, here is Supriya.
Welcome, Supriya. Can you tell us a little bit about your background?
Greetings, commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. My educational background, I have two degrees in architecture, and the first 15 years of my career, I worked mostly on design aspects. I worked on large-scale projects in downtown Los Angeles in AECOM. And the last 10 years, I have been working exclusively with Viewpoint School as their Director of Capital Projects, as their Project Manager, working on their all the projects in the viewpoints in the school. And I'm primarily the owner's rep, working on all aspects, design-wise, or even space planning, anything that they might need. Design-wise, I address.
And are you a resident of the city of Calabasas?
No, I'm not. I would love to be, but I'm not.
And actually, Greg, I don't think I asked you that question. Are you a resident of the city of Calabasas?
I am. I've been for several years.
Thank you. All right, well, do any of the commissioners have any questions of Supriya?
I have a question. Supriya, so just to make sure I understand, you have been, in effect, helping implement the, what is it, three- or four-stage viewpoint project that we've approved over the last many years?
Yes, I joined Viewpoint in Phase Two, and I've been working with them since Phase Two, Three, and consecutive projects.
Oh, I see. Okay. And I think you said you've been doing viewpoint work exclusively.
Yes.
I see. And I think you said you're doing it for the owner. Are you an employee of Viewpoint, or?
Yes, I'm an employee of Viewpoint.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to kick this back to Jaclyn. I believe that you have that you have a project for our applicants to look at, or a structure, a building for our applicants to look at, and for them to give us some input regarding their thoughts on this building, and what they might consider as an improvement or improvements to that building.
Do we have a few examples, so I can go ahead and share my screen again? I wanted to mention, I wanted to keep it kind of realistic to what they might be seeing, so I didn't pick anything huge. You know, no high-rises or anything like that, something more typical that they might see at one of their ARP meetings. So we go ahead and share. Okay. Here's our first one.
We're getting some feedback from someone. I don't know. Okay. Whatever it is, it's better. Okay. With this one, why don't we start with Greg? Greg, if you would be so kind as to share your thoughts about this building, and perhaps any improvements that you think could be made?
Sure, I mean, I'd ask, or I'd suggest that the walls in front color match in some sort with perhaps adding some dimension to it. You could little foam shape or something along the lines. Perhaps the you know. Yeah, so the only other thing I could suggest is I don't know what's on the other side of that, and maybe grooming the tree there a little bit better.
Do you want to mention that as the panelist, I believe that you should have an annotate feature if you kind of hover your mouse towards the top of your screen? Maybe able to use the pencil if you want to kind of show the areas that you're anything on the image.
Unfortunately, I don't know exactly how to do that. But I mean, really, all I could suggest right off the cuff is I try to add some dimension to the wall, match coloring to it, and groom the tree up a little bit. That's on the left-hand side.
All right, thank you. Supriya, you have any thoughts regarding this building?
Yes, firstly, I would say that this building with the color and the shape, it's standing out, and it is standing out too much. It does not, it needs a softer color so that it can look attractive and kind of merge with the neighborhood, not just stand out. This color and this shape is jarring, actually. And it's not aesthetically pleasing. I know aesthetic standards are subjective, but to me, this is it's a concrete block. And I would soften it up with adding more landscape on the sides. With the landscape in the front, I would soften that concrete up a little bit to kind of give it add landscape on the sides, add landscape in the front. Maybe change the material in the front to make it more homogenous sort of with the landscape. And I would definitely not use that color because it is not pleasing to the eye. And I'm sorry, these are strong opinions, but aesthetic standards are subjective, and to me, this is not attractive at all and does not go with the neighborhood, for sure.
Thank you. Jaclyn, do you have another one?
I do. Go to my next example. Wanted to include a commercial one as well.
All right, Supriya. Again, any thoughts?
With this one, I think the the structure looks like there's one structure placed on top of each other. There is no it doesn't look connected. It looks like it's floating, and I would suggest actually, I would suggest using a different roofing material to kind of make the structure it's not gelling well with the surroundings, like the surround, it's standing out. And it is standing out a little bit too much. If the roof in the front was adjusted so that it would be a complete structure, it might look a little bit better.
Thank you. Greg, do you have any thoughts on this building?
Yes, for Calabasas, it looks to me a little bit too urban. You know, I like a little bit of the country theme that we have. I know it's hard to keep that, but I would definitely get away from the steel and glass and try to add some more earth-type tones to it and make it a little bit more earthy. I think there's far too much structure for that little piece of land that it's on right there. So, and again, dimensionally, I can't really tell, but height-wise, I think it far exceeds you know, height limits that we have. You know, and then obviously, there's some landscaping. You know, landscaping looks okay for commercial. You have to get in and out, but that's pretty much the opinions that I have.
Okay, thank you. Jaclyn, do we have any others?
I do. I'll share one more if you want to look at another. And for this one, let's see. There we go. For this one, I thought it might be fun to add that hypothetically, this project is proposed within our scenic corridor overlay zone. So imagine somewhere off of Olapanga Canyon or off of Mahal Highway among oak trees on a hillside along those lines.
All right, thank you. Greg?
Yes. First of all, I don't think the color's earthy and doesn't blend, so since we're hillside, that would be my first approach. Secondly, you're trying to put a you know, I don't know how to say, like Florida-type theme in, you know, an oaky, hilly-type background, so I would address that. And yeah, really, that's, you know, that's what I've got. Obviously, more trees and more trees that blend with the hillside.
Thank you.
Indigenous.
All right, Supriya?
I would agree with Greg. The color is, I would definitely change the color to make it something that will blend in. And I would add some screening so that the house itself is not seen from the scenic corridor so that the actual house could remain as is, the design or the other elements, but it would not be seen from the scenic corridor because of the landscape, and that would maintain the beauty of the scenic corridor.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have anything else, or?
I just have those three.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, after having heard those comments, do any of the commissioners have any further questions? Nope. Okay. Maureen, now, I know that I believe that, were we in person, this vote, I believe this vote would not be a verbal vote. Is that correct?
You can have someone make a motion with regard to a candidate, see if the motion's second, saying carries. And I would invite you to have discussion over the candidates first and then ask for motion.
All right. And yes, Dennis.
This is, this is not a question, it's a comment. And that is that, you know, there is turnover on this body. And there are other opportunities to serve in the Calabasas building, design and development world. So I would say that if we, and we are faced with, you know, choosing between two very capable candidates, there certainly is an opportunity to serve in the near future, I'm sure. And whoever is not appointed at this point or recommended for appointment, I would encourage you to stick with us and be a part because both of you have credentials that are solid and the experience you have and the perspective you have is, I think, valuable to the city.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions? Michael?
Thank you. I do agree with everything that Dennis said because you're both qualified. And I would certainly appreciate your input even to the planning commission, just as, you know, as a, as somebody viewing the planning commission, because, because we do get projects where we have to comment on the style or whether it fits in. And we also have to comment on the, on the landscaping. And so I would appreciate your input because you're both, you are both qualified. And by the way, on that first house, I thought that was horrible. But I've never seen a fence like that or way, whatever you call it, that wall in the front that slanted with the, that's just slanted with the slope, I guess, of the street. Most of the time you see sort of a step, if, but, so it was jarring to me. I mean, it's just, just as you, as Supriya said, it was like a box.
Well, there were, there were so many, so many things.
Yeah, there, there were a lot of things with that. I just don't see how that would ever fit in a particular, if we had to vote on something because it has to fit in for, for one reason or another. I just don't know how that would fit in, but.
All right, Dennis, did you have something?
I just wanted, Michael made me think about the other thing I wanted to say. And that is that the ARP meetings are open and public. And again, if one of you is not going to be appointed today, but you know, you certainly are welcome to be a part of the ARP process because it's a public meeting. And I would encourage you, if you are interested in continuing the pursuit of, of a post here or elsewhere in the city, that would be something that be worthy and we'd be delighted to have you there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I would just say that I do think, Dennis, you're right. I think that there are at least one, if not two, of the current members of the ARP who we selected sort of on the second go-around. They did not get selected the first time that they applied, but were selected the second or third time. I'm, I'm quite, I know one and there may be two. And of course, Dennis, when he was on the city council, rejected my application for planning commission the first time around. I don't know that he did specifically, but the council did. But I persevered.
And you had an illustrious, many years.
That's right.
It probably was not an issue of competition, John. It had to do instead with, you know, the moment in time. You know how those things work.
I understand. No hard feelings.
With, with that, I'm going to ask if there is a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion to recommend that we select Supriya Colcarney as our first alternate and encourage Greg to be a part of our process as well. Whenever he has the time away from his things.
And is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I, I mean, in support of the second, and I completely agree with Michael and Dennis that both are highly qualified. I do think that Supriya's experience in Calabasas specifically weighs in, slightly tips the balance in my view in her favor. Greg will get there. I think he mentioned earlier that he was been, he lives here. And I think although he doesn't work here or anticipate working here, he does live here. And that's, that's a big plus. It's only been, I think, three years, he mentioned. And even though Supriya doesn't work, live here, she's clearly worked in the area and viewpoints just up the street and, and I followed that project. And the fact that she was, has been very involved in phases two forward, which I think have all gone well because we've had very few times where we've had to vote on amending anything. So that's, that's a pretty good feather in, in, in her development cap. So just, just on balance, and again, it's real close, I would support the motion.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, the motion on the floor is to appoint Supriya Colcarney as a member to serve as an alternate to the architectural review panel. All in favor of the motion? Can we take a voice, a voice vote on this, Maureen?
Yes. Before you vote, could I ask a question?
Yes, certainly.
I mean, if, wouldn't there be at some point a possibility for conflict of interest with her working in Calabasas in this type of field and being on, on the board? I mean, what would the procedure be at that point?
Matt, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Happy to cover that. For those who don't know me, Matthew Summers, Assistant City Attorney. When any member of any commission, including this commission, but also the architectural review panel, has a conflict on a project and they are prohibited from participating on the city side on that project. And they're further prohibited from bringing their project forward to the panel on which they sit unless they're the only licensed architect or licensed lawyer or, or landscape architect for their project. So in this case, if Ms. Colcarney is appointed, she would not be able to vote on the city side or advise on any viewpoint project and would be recused entirely from any viewpoint project. So too is any other city official on any project in which they have an interest on their personal side. So they would be recused from that.
I appreciate that explanation. So I would imagine then with all that viewpoint has going on, and I would assume that they have a lot going and will continue to be improving that school. She's gonna basically step aside. So you're gonna have less people with input and involved in that vote. Is that how it works? I'm just asking.
For those items, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So I, I've stated what the motion is on the floor and I will ask all in favor of the motion. Say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, Supriya, congratulations. You are the newest member of the architectural review panel. And Greg, as, as indicated by several of the commissioners, there are, you know, there are always opportunities arising and, and we would encourage you to, to keep at it.
I will. I appreciate it. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. And Michael, do you want to, I think we will say goodbye to.
Yes, I was gonna say, I'm gonna move them back, Supriya and Greg, back into the attending section.
I would just like to thank you all for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a minute. Well, there we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to, I believe, items three and four kind of go together. Item number three is a code review of revenue, revenue generating home activities consisting of several, several code sections relating to, relating to those, those activities. And I believe that that is intended as background to our discussion of item number four, which is to review and make a recommendation to the city council regarding a request for exception to the city's short-term rental prohibitions. So who will be? Jacqueline, are you, are you up on this?
It'll actually be me.
Ah, okay.
This was a presentation that we prepared and gave to the city council as we began discussions on building our short-term rental prohibitions. So I'm gonna share my screen.
And may I ask a question of our attorney?
Of course.
Wendy, is it all right? Wendy, did you hear? I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, absolutely. Please, please. I'm sorry.
We're not taking any action on this code overview segment of this, of this matter. This is background in order to make a decision on item four on the agenda. Isn't that correct?
Correct. That's correct. Item three is a review of the current codes. Item four is the council's request for the planning commission to review and comment on a recent request for one or more exceptions to the city's prohibition on short-term rentals.
I think that, you know, all the commissioners would probably have some opportunity and desire to address some of the issues that are here in the code overview. But again, our role is really just to know what is and how it applies to the next item.
Correct. We're not, we're not considering any of these code provisions that are being provided as background. We are only addressing the short-term rental request for modification, I guess, of the short-term rental prohibitions.
I understand. Thank you.
Go ahead, Maureen, please.
Wonderful. So you could see this is a little old from November 2017, but still quite valuable. So here at the state, yes.
Your, your screen is not being shared. My apologies for the interruption, but since we're not seeing what you're seeing, would be difficult.
Can you see it now?
It's coming up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up now. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Slide two. All right, do you have it?
Yes.
All right. So we're just gonna run down the current laws in the city that tell you how you can make money with your house legally. So there is really three types of activities. There are activities where you don't have to come and visit my department to get a permit. Then there are activities that you will require to have a permit. There are two types, ministerial things that the staff can do over the counter for you. And things are discretionary, things that have to go through a public hearing process. That would either go through a director, through the planning commission, or in fact, could even go all the way through the council. And then there are the prohibited activities. We want to remind you of those as well. So here's the first one, garage sale. You can have a garage sale, take out your old junk. And people like me will come by and buy it up to four times a year. And you have three-day duration. So Friday, Saturday, Sunday, if you had a holiday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And it's intended for rest and sale of personal property. Things that you would commonly have in your house or your neighbor's house that you don't want anymore. You can also rent your home. But here's the trick, you can rent a room in your house. You can rent the entire house, but it must be for more than a 30-day period. And you can't rent more than two bedrooms or rooms at any given time. So if you have a four-bedroom house, you can rent out two of the four, but not three of the four because it places you in a different category. So let's talk about the other prohibition on renting a room. And that is to have an occupancy of under a 30-day period. Under a 30-day period, it's considered to be a transient occupancy. People are coming in and leaving, just like a hotel room. So if you have a rental of under 30 days, it's considered to be a commercial hotel like Hughes. And it is not permitted, never has been, in a single-family residential zone. The difference is that you're no longer a tenant. You become a guest. Guests don't clean up, take out their trash, do the laundry, pay their bills, maintain the premises, park in the right spaces out in front. They do things that they wouldn't recognize who are out of character with the neighborhood on occasion. Now, if you rent three or more rooms, you're a boarding house. So you could call that a sorority, a fraternity, maybe call it a commune. But anyway, they are not permitted in single-family neighborhood zones. So if you want to start a commune, you can't. But you could decide for a short-term duration to actually opt for your home for home filming. A permit is required. That is ministerial process through city staff. You can do that up to 14 days a year, up to 20 with council and community support. It is managed currently by what is now called our communications department. And it used to be a contract services. We used to have a specialty film permit office in Malibu. We moved it in-house. So now you have your very own city Calabasas film permit office. And it happens to be in the hallway just down from my desk. So called Teal Pockney, she's doing a great job. And we are making a small amount of money annually for the city in doing this. You also might want to do a hobby farm since the county of Los Angeles has relaxed requirements for home-baked products or for garden vegetables. It is a limited agricultural use as far as our code is concerned. So this isn't commercial farming. It's got hobby farms. It's what Maureen tries to do in her backyard, not successfully, but I might want to sell that someday. Different from sales of commercially grown crops like marijuana. I want to make that distinction as well. Three zones, HM, our open space zone. We do have homes in open space zones and rural residential zones only. And there are certain requirements that you have sustainable best management practices. We don't want you spraying Roundup anywhere to take care of your weeds. So if you'd like to try growing corn for your community and selling bags of it, we have an idea for you.
I have a question for you, Maureen.
Sure.
A number of folks might be confused by this. This is if a hobby farm output is being sold for revenue-producing purposes. If you have, if you have a home garden or organic garden or any other kind of growth in your yard and it's for your family's and it's for your family's consumption or your own, that's not falling under this category. Is that correct?
That is correct.
How about chickens and goats?
That would fall under the hobby farm too, effectively. It's very similar process. Few more rules in there. We've had to take a look at corrections to our rules because it says three animals maximum. And somebody came to us seeking information about beekeeping, and it's very hard to keep only three bees. So we had to study that very carefully. Ultimately, we don't think it's a good fit for our native bees in the Santa Monica Mountains. So we're not going to be opening our code to beekeeping. But say you wanted to do three chickens, you certainly could.
Thank you.
A permit is required for bed and breakfast since while we have none in the city, our codes do allow it. Hillside mountain is rural rec zones only. You will have to have a resident within the facility. So if you had a big house in the zones and you wanted to turn it into a bed and breakfast, then you could come to the planning commission with an application. A C P would be required conditional use permit. You can't set these up as small studios, no kitchens in the room. And you would be required to meet traditional home standards. So you couldn't build a bed and breakfast in that's a 30-room built bed and breakfast in. You need to effectively show that it is a residence in, in all aspects. Another thing you could do with your home is to get a permit and operate it as a daycare facility. We have a few fees within the city. It's licensed through the California Department of Social Services. You could have daycare for not only children or infants, but actually adult daycare, which is because of an aging population in California. Very nice idea. You must have the residents occupied by a full-time resident. It is a simple zoning clearance permit through the city. Slightly different licensing program through the Department of Social Services. And the size, the number of of daycare visitors would be subject to an occupancy limit, not by us, but by social services. You could take it one step further, and you could operate a residential care home. This is also regulated through the state. You may have up to six residents, and they're true residents. They would get their mail there, their meals there, sleep there at night. This would be their home. So it's commonly called board and care facilities. We have one that we're aware of within the city. And the only permit required through staff in the city is zoning clearance. As to the permitting process is regulated through the state. It is, if you built a small A U on your property or even converted a portion of your home to a junior A U, you could actually develop that portion of your property as a residential unit. You can develop a freestanding to you up to 1,200 square feet, 60, 650 for your junior in your house. You can have one or the other. You can't be greedy. You can't have both. Again, they must be rented for a period of over 30 days. And it is a very simple ministerial process through the planning department to obtain a zoning clearance. And then whatever modifications you would need to make, you would take that through a building permit process. Now, we want to make sure everyone understands that any transit occupancy that home or room rental under 30 days is prohibited. It's considered to really be a de facto hotel room. And it is unpermitted in single-family residential zones. So very different than the bed and breakfast, the hotel or the motel. These are just taking your room and renting it out through websites like VRPO, Airbnb, HomeAway, or other such platforms. Now, it's an interesting line on commercial retailing facilities. If you're going to sell product out of your house, that is prohibited. It doesn't protect or preserve a residential character to our neighborhoods. So we see very often that homes are leased out for estate sales, trunk sales, or there is a product of some site in which a garage has become de facto a showroom. The worst scenarios are the ones, thank goodness, you hear about it, other cities, not ours, where the home is used for sales of things like fireworks. Very, very dangerous activities. And so we always would love to know if you believe that somebody is retailing out of their home. There's also red flags that you can see. You get big truck deliveries at the house, new things, and boxes come in, and boxes are placed in the track. There's a lot of packaged items, bulk product, and certainly not normal household goods. If you saw that cement out in the front lawn, this is no longer a garage sale. It is commercial retailing on a front lawn, and it is prohibited. Oftentimes, these events are accompanied by public advertisements. Estate sales, things of that nature. Craigslist says, "Come and look at our estate of Indian art." And the day before the truck has arrived and brought in all the product. So please let us know that this is going on out there, but please also do not engage in this activity. We had one time in an estate sale in a home in which there were eight treadmills, all brand new. And so the code enforcement officer asked the homeowner, "Why are you selling eight treadmills?" And he said, "Well, he bought them for his family, and they didn't want them, so he's selling them all." You can tell, you can tell what's really going on. If you rent your home for commercial activities, that is also prohibited. We have homes where we have seen that they are advertised for corporate retreats, special dinner events, performances, workshops. You name it. If a home is being rented for a wedding, we will have a very tough time accommodating if that repeats itself once, twice, four, eight, 12 times a year, because then the home has become commercialized. If you say, "Hey, you can use my home, but you know, I'll help you out." We're certainly not going to shut down a wedding, but if we see a pattern, we will come in. The worst ones, of course, are when a home is rented for a short duration period. And we have what turns into a party house. We've all seen this house on media. It took the city of Los Angeles years and years and years to shut this home down to this activity. Oftentimes, it's used for event advertisement and promotion on social media. Sometimes influencers throw art parties like this. You have alcohol sale occurring on a private site, so very difficult for ABC and other groups to get in there to regulate that. Oftentimes, by noise and activities, the sheriff for law enforcement have to come in to shut down the house. But there are also illegal assemblies. Homes are designed for, you know, a family group, most likely six and under. They're not designed for 400 people jumping up and down to music. It just doesn't work. The physical structure of the house doesn't accommodate that. And when you add lighting, amplified music, outdoor fire pits, floodlights, and you block up all the exits because you don't want anyone to get into your illegal party, you have a very serious and dangerous situation. So we discourage anyone from considering using their home in that regard. So what the red flags about event home rentals? Always vacant structure. We have yet to find some that have people in residence at the facility. Anytime they're advertised to the public, you see cars and people erupting that are clearly strangers to the neighborhood. Unusual parking patterns, delivery trucks, tents popping up in backyards, large, large groups of people, and especially amplified sound and light. So if you see that happening at your neighbor's house and it's not a private party, please call the sheriff at night. Please call us during the daytime if you see activities occurring. We're happy to check it out. So within HOAs, if you have concern, please include your HOA. They're your first resource. Or through code enforcement, we have our city line. You still call and get transferred over. Or our 818-518-3211 number. That's our after-hours number. You can try us. Sometimes it's more of a sheriff activity, depending on the number of activity, who will actually do the visit. You can do website referral. And remember that anytime that the city receives a complaint, it is confidential. Your name is not disclosed. We use you as a point of contact, but even when you make a referral, we may not be able to tell you very much about the case if it's a serious one and just opened. You're also always welcome to contact the Los Hills Sheriff. And they want to know about disruptive events in communities. So that takes us to the three groups, allowed permits required and prohibited. And this, please use its background information to our next item. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do, Maureen. Excuse me. If we can hop back to, I guess, page four.
Whoops.
How are you handling college students? People rent their home and they may be occupied by an infinite number of college students. How does that fit into what we have here?
If it's beyond two rooms, it's an illegal activity. We have had code enforcement cases in which people have actually we had one very disturbing case in which an individual not only had the, it was a three-bedroom condominium or townhome, they not only had, could use the two rooms to have rent and find, but they converted their garage into an additional bedroom. And they took their attic space and made it a bedroom. There was a ladder leading up into the attic space and a poor person up there who actually had candles in her room, if you can imagine. So luckily, we were tipped off by a neighbor. That was a large code enforcement case. It has been cleared. So the trick here is that we don't go snooping in your bedroom, and neither do we want to snoop in your bedroom. But we do appreciate a referral if you truly believe that there is a large group in a home that is not a family group. Please let us know. We can go by, knock on the door, and see if we can understand what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Maureen. Now, by the way, this is a request for a recommendation to the city council. Is this a public hearing?
It is not.
Not at this time. We're, we're a couple of stages ahead of that. If the commission makes a recommendation for a change in the codes, then that would go up to council, and then council will sort of say, "Yay, go forward," or "No." Then it'll come back for, at that point, staff will draft an ordinance, and then it'd come back for a public hearing. It would not make sense to draft an ordinance if there's no support for any change.
Thank you. All right, so.
Do you need a motion to receive and file this overview?
No motion is needed on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Just, it is background information, correct? Thank you. Do we have, do we have any discussion here? Would like to, would like to lead the way here with comments.
I think, Maureen, is there a staff introduction to item four?
I have a PowerPoint to item four, so I'll be joined by Jacqueline on this item. And I can share my screen and start that if the chair wishes.
Please, let's roll right into item number four, please.
Let me go back. There we go. So this is just a discussion item for you. You did not have to make a decision this evening. But we will start the discussion of whether or not the city should craft an exception to our current short-term rental provisions. This has been sent to the council. And effectively, where you are right now is that I put date in general because that's, I went back to take a look at all of the actions. There was actually a year of actions that the city council and staff worked on to enact a full ban on short-term rentals. So this will be an overview of all the actions taken by the council and a history of why this occurred. Again, we're all clear that this rental of a home for a period of 30 days or less. This actually was a reaction to staff, the city council receiving complaints of public comment from a group of residents up on Atmoseville regarding a party house that's homeless being advertised rented as a short-term use property weekends, evenings, and drawing very large groups, over 300 people, selling alcohol, doing commercial filming with no permits. They had bright night lighting up in the hillsides. There were overnight stays. As a matter of fact, this room had, when staff actually went in to conduct an inspection as allowed by a court, we found that the rooms had key locks, so you could rent a room while you were up there. It's very interesting. There was tons of traffic disruption, trash debris. You can imagine what happens when 300 people are walking up a hill where their water bottles go. Or when they're walking back to their car where their drink goes, or their cigarettes, or anything else that they're smoking. You can imagine what happens when 300 people leave the house. A bit bust or more than a big bust. We had some very unruly conduct. And between the sheriff and neighbors and code enforcement and the will of the city council, this house is out of business. This is a picture of one of the daytime uses of the house. If you look over here in this back corner, you can't see, but this was sponsored by an alcohol, a new alcohol product. And so they rented the house to throw a party. And so they rented the house to throw a party. And, uh, there was a very wide invitation list that grew through the evening with bands that performed. And, uh, it was, uh, an opportunity to sell hard liquor in a private setting. There wasn't a sale of the liquor of that time, but to promote the product. This was the road leading up. Uh, this was happening, um, effectively every weekend. Two or three nights in a row, depending on what the event was that was occurring. These are very narrow roadways. Um, this, um, was all, um, there were trucks that initially came up these roads to deliver and stage. The event furniture came and out, um, stages came in and out, lights, camera action came in and out. And, uh, these are just some of the pictures of the trash. Um, there were, uh, at one point, um, somebody counted about twenty trash cans outside the home after one day of activities. So it gives you a flavor of, um, this, the trash that got into the trash cans. You can imagine what didn't even get into the trash cans. There were interesting, I would say, articles of attire that residents found in the streets after such events. Um, and, um, other products, I, I should say. So this was really a problem. And, um, after lawsuits, uh, were filed for the new citizens involved. Um, in parallel to that, uh, council authorized prosecutor, the city attorney and staff to go forward with the plan. And our plan involved strengthening four areas of the code and acting new codes. Uh, the first had to do with noise, nine point two eight. The second had to create a new chapter of what constituted allowed and unruly gathering. This was a code that was drawn from what the city of LA was successful in enacting to shut down their big party houses. We also made revisions to our film permitting. Why? Because film permits were being gathered. Um, as, um, what would I say, a bit of a ruse to cover up a party? They said, oh, we're just filming, uh, for an event, but, um, that really wasn't the case. This was not a legitimate film purpose. Um, and then there were numerous provisions and use code, uh, which we strengthened as well. Among one is, uh, the ability of the director to deny permits to such facilities moving forward. So there, uh, for a period of time. So, so there was a lot of work for a period of about one year. Um, so the first ordinance we passed, um, created stronger definitions about what noise was. And noise was effectively anything that was loud and unnecessary. It was not necessary to have a band with amplified music outside. That was a violation of the code that we strengthened this. Unruly gatherings had to address the kinds of things that happen with unattended residential parties. When you, uh, include a lot of people and a lot of liquor. Um, these are, there were fifteen categories identified. A few of them below give you a flavor of what we were dealing with. Urinating, uh, was one of them, defecating was another one, uh, fighting. You know, somebody, hey, get out of my way, turned into a fist cup issue. Um, large assemblies, again, homes aren't designed for three hundred people, even though they have four, five bedrooms. Um, it's, it's a danger. It's a danger to overload circuits in that home. Um, and bring in lighting, stages, sets, uh, bands, et cetera. Ordinance twenty eighteen through sixteen, March of twenty eighteen. Um, this was successfully enacted in Ojai. We thank, um, Matt Summers for working on this in Ojai and bringing it to our attention. This is a ban on commercial advertisement of short-term rentals. It targets the Airbnbs, the HomeAway, the, um, the, the platforms which take your home and make it that room, that home into a commercial site. Commercial activity. Um, of course, there's exemptions for hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, those still lawfully, um, enacted can be advertised on Airbnb, but not your room. Not for under thirty days. So one of the things that has happened, um, is these sites have proliferated. Um, two years ago, there was about fifteen sites. We're well over that now because everyone has a new app to share home. Craigslist is an example of a venue in which these rentals can occur as well. So just monitoring for this, it's a difficult activity. But once a home is found, the city can contact the platform, that entity and, and advise them of the ban and request the removal of the advertisement. Matt, do you want to say anything more on this subject?
Uh, yeah, I'll just briefly add, we developed, um, I developed this ordinance for Ojai and then brought it to Calabasas. And the reason being that proving the actual existence of an Airbnb that's unlawful or a uh, VRBO or one of the other short-term rental, uh, platforms is a challenge because it's difficult to, or if quite challenging, if not sometimes impossible, to prove whether a rental actually happened. If we're going to take it to a code enforcement case and, and go to, we would need proof beyond a reasonable doubt in a criminal court or proof at a preponderance level in a civil court. And in both cases, we need to prove that the homeowner had indeed rented it. So we need to show that there was a person and a rental and that that rental was paid as opposed to simply, uh, a guest, which is what the allegation always is. The short-term rental ad ban was developed because it allows a much easier case to be made that cuts off demand, an easier case, because all we have to prove is that the advertisement itself is available on the internet. And that's much easier, um, much more easy to show because the ads are put out in order to draw in those who are wanting to rent. And that's the second component of this. It cuts off the demand for the illegal rentals because we block the primary tool by which uh, property owners who are running these illegal rentals find new potential clients. And so it's been effective as a tool to, uh, shortcut the enforcement challenge that comes from going after the rentals themselves, while also reducing the, the available supply and thus the demand. Um, and it's, it's been a successful tool that we put in place here, uh, three, three and a half years ago. And, um, I'll note that for those who might be wondering, what about the First Amendment? Doesn't that apply? The answer is the First Amendment does apply to the city. We cannot, um, take any action in violation of it. But the First Amendment does not protect commercial speech related to illegal activities. So, so too could a, um, someone selling illegal firearms or um, other illegal products not advertise it online, uh, free from the First Amendment's protection. Here too, um, add the commercial rentals that are short-term, that is less than thirty days are illegal. And so the speech advertising them just is not protected by the First Amendment and the city can impose this ad ban. Thank you.
May I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
Um, does the city, uh, face any liability for not having constraints like this in place?
No, because the city can choose to allow short-term rentals as a policy choice. A number of cities do, and making that allowance, uh, would also be a valid policy option. In this case, we developed the ad ban ordinance based on the, the council's prior policy choices to ban these. But no, it's, they can be allowed as well, and as long as we are uniform and even-handed in our enforcement, we would not face liability for whichever policy choice is made.
Thank you.
In April of twenty eighteen, another ordinance was introduced. Um, this one had to do with the prohibited prohibition of new permits violation of this code other than for correcting code violations. They also modified the code to allow us to be able to collect the cause for inspection or verification of code deficiencies. And this was specifically because of the deficiencies that we found unpermitted, uh, modified electrical work in our party house. Um, so we strengthened the code, uh, next time around. Uh, we could actually, um, collect our fees for inspection and verification that the corrections had been in fact done. So a unique provision, one that's very useful. Um, the other thing we did is plug loopholes, plug little, uh, slots that somebody could say, well, it's not so clear. Um, one of which was, is, um, a short-term rental, just an accessory use, like, you know, I don't know, some backyard shed. Yes, there is no, so we plugged that little loophole. And again, we continued to weave through, uh, any aspect of the code that we could find that clarification, that only lawfully established hotels, motels or bed and breakfasts could be used for that short-term stay. Finally, in late October, we brought through, um, modifications, it was last year, uh, to the film code. Um, first of all, we inserted findings into the code that would allow us to say that um, a particular film shoot would not interfere with the enjoyment of a residential community. So things like, um, flying helicopters really low and blowing up cars in a neighborhood really kind of interferes with the enjoyment of residential communities. So this would give us a basis to say no within a film shoot. But we use the opportunity at the same time um, to plug that hole about using a party that you really wanted as an excuse for a film permit. So that enjoyment would be disruptive if you held a wild extravagant party. Uh, we require the homeowners to sign on. Sometimes, uh, we have applicants that come forward, uh, to take up a film permit on behalf of a studio or other source at a home. Now you require for residential applications for that property owner to sign on and take responsibility for what's about to happen there. Uh, we also took the opportunity to limit the number of people on site. So you couldn't bring three hundred people on and call it a, um, a, um, film crew. Um, say that these are all my actors, not the case. Uh, we prohibited public access to a film shoot. So, um, you don't just pick up people to your event and bring them in. You shut the door, you make this legitimate filming activity. And finally, we eliminated overnight stays at the property where the film shoot was occurring. And again, this applies to residential properties. If you want to have an armed guard stand up front and guard the cameras, great, have fun. Overnight, great, you can stay overnight. If you're the resident of the house and you want to sleep in your bedroom there that evening, great, please do so. But if you're the film crew, you don't get to throw a party there because you wrapped up shooting that day and you're going to stay up for night, causing disruption before you leave. So that is now in effect as well. Um, Jaclyn, uh, it's very interesting. Why don't you give a bit of background about your thesis work? And, uh, why you take a particular strong interest to this subject?
Yes, so, thank you. Um, in my last year of college, which was in two thousand nineteen, my senior research project was actually on the impact of Airbnbs specifically to the city of Los Angeles. So I have a little bit of knowledge on the subject. Granted, it's two years old, but it did some checking and made sure that most of it still stands. So I have a little bit of knowledge on Airbnb and other short-term rental companies like Airbnb. And Maureen has already covered most of the impacts of short-term rentals to the immediate surroundings, the nuisance it causes to the neighbors. But it also creates a impact to the community at large. Uh, one of the first ways that it impacts the larger community is by weakening rev- revenue and jobs at legally established hotels within a city. Um, and another way that it contributes in a negative way to the community is the impact that it has to the housing market. I'm sure we're all familiar with the statewide housing crisis that we're in. And the State Department of Housing and Community Development identifies a variety of different challenges as contributing factors to this housing crisis. Two of the factors that it identifies are the fact that we are not building enough housing and that of the existing housing stock, um, the rates of rentals units are much higher than what most Californians can afford. So of most Californian renters, I believe, um, over half of them spend more than a third of their income on rent. So rent is too expensive and there are not enough housing units. And short-term rentals contribute to these two challenges even further by taking units that would otherwise be put on the long-term rental market and using them for short-term rentals. So of the existing pool of long-term rentals, it shrinks that supply, which in turn increases the demand and leads to a spike in the prices of long-term rental rates. So, um, in my research and in research in other cities in the country, um, the general finding is that when the Airbnb density of a region increases, the rental rates in that region then increase along with it. By a small percentage, but it is a notable percentage that when the density of short-term rentals increase, the long-term rental rates then increase afterwards. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Maureen for the next slide.
Thank you. And, um, let's remember how important a room is. When I was in college, I lived in a room for four years. I didn't live in a house or a condo or a one-bedroom apartment. I had a room. And so rooms are important sources of housing for individuals who cannot afford a full freestanding, uh, unit. They share. And, um, by putting rooms into, uh, short-term rental status as opposed to leasing them for that year while you're in school, uh, removes an opportunity for an individual from having, uh, a place to call home. So another important component as well. So, um, why is this in front of you? Uh, we received a request, uh, to the city council and a public comment to the city council. Um, from a petitioner who seeks an exemption to the city's full ban. Uh, that letter is part of your, uh, package. Um, the exemption that is sought, it's in consideration of, uh, seniors um, who have homes with, uh, oftentimes children who have left. So there are spare of rooms in the house. Um, perhaps there is a disability or some other factor that limits income. Uh, seniors and retired individuals can experience, um, income insecurities, um, as they age. And that's often the case. Um, so that low income component can be made up, this petitioner says, through consideration of using a room for a short-term rental. Um, the suggestions the petitioner makes is to just limit the number of guests. Um, to, uh, register perhaps the unit, but make sure that there is a payment in consideration to the city from the income brought in. Um, and the petitioner notes that, um, the city does permit, um, home-based business licenses if you want to be, uh, working on your property. Um, so why not consider this like working on your property? You're a, uh, uh, tiny hotel manager, um, using your property for that purpose. So, uh, the council, uh, took that in and, um, placed it as a request to the PC, planning commission to determine whether or not that was reasonable for, uh, the council to pursue. So staff request is that you discuss the petitioner's request and formulate like recommendation that we can return to the city council. Jaclyn, uh, um, Assistant Attorney at Summers and I are here to answer any questions you might have. Um, Assistant Attorney at Summers and I are here to answer any questions you might have. And also Michael Klein, who is our housing expert, our senior planner on this subject. So uh you can uh include him in the conversation as well. He's the one who takes all the housing calls for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Uh, very very thorough presentation. Um, so let's start the discussion, uh questions, discussion. Um, and and you know, I might wanna kick, I might wanna kick off this discussion. Um, unless there are questions first.
I I have a question.
Yes, John.
Um, I'm not understanding the how the petitioner's request is substantially different than what would fall under the category of a permit required for bed and breakfast. A bed and breakfast, I know you have gotta be in the right zone. You have to have a primary resident, you have to have a a permit. But I could, could I not, as this petitioner, just decide, get a permit for bed and breakfast and rent one of my rooms for less than thirty days? Every different person every night in my bed and breakfast. I don't even have to serve breakfast, right? That's not a requirement. So why, why doesn't bed and breakfast permitting take care of what the petitioner is is really asking for? I guess that's more than a question, sorry.
It would certainly meet the zone. And it's not a over the counter permit by any means. It is a program of activities. We would have to take a look at parking and other features to operate this facility. Um, but it would be the closest thing to what the petitioner is asking for outside of relaxation of the ban. Um, the bed and breakfast has always been part of the rural neighborhoods. Um, so away from others, a large lot. Um, we, it has never been part of a residential, single family neighborhoods.
And you should confirm, um, as I recall, the location of the person who's made this request is not in one of the four zones that allows B and B. Is that correct?
We did not have an exact location here, but um it is not. It's in a single family residential neighborhood.
Okay.
To the best part of knowledge.
I'm curious, um, because one of the, one of the, the key elements of the request uh was as, as I saw it, that uh this gentleman is a senior and part of the, the, the reasons behind the request was because he is a senior and he's retired and the income, et cetera. Uh, if, if if there were, if there were some kind of an exception made uh only for seniors, I might it expose the city to a claim of discrimination?
The existing state housing laws do contemplate certain restrictions made on the basis of seniors. Uh, as an example, senior housing that has um a certain amount, uh, no, actually, I take that back, hundred percent senior housing that's restricted to folks over age fifty five and above, uh, which is the state's definition of senior, is granted certain density bonuses. So if we stuck to fifty five and tried to tap into the state's existing allowance for seniors, that may be a viable option. But it would certainly be something we would, we would be analyzing in uh extensively analyzing if there's support to move forward with that, with that type of an approach.
All right, uh, if if there are no other questions, um, I I certainly have some thoughts on this, on this matter. Um, so I guess I'll kick off the discussion. Um. I frankly don't see any change in circumstances. Uh. From the underlying and, you know, from, from those underlying the initial adoption uh of of the prohibition on the ban on short term rentals. Um. I don't see a change in circumstances that would warrant uh making exceptions. Um, and, and to my mind, there were some very, very good reasons for adoption of this ban. Uh, several of them were covered in the presentation. Uh, I, I did a I did a lot of, of work and research on uh the impact of short term rentals. Uh, more at the time, uh their impact in the context of homeowners associations. Uh, I, I did a continuing legal education for, I sat on a panel, uh presenting on the subject. And I frankly, I, you know, the impact um the, these were raised in the presentation, but the nuisance created so often uh from these short term rentals, traffic, parking, trash, debris, you have people coming in and out. Um. You know, if we start, if we start bringing in exceptions, are we, are we not inviting? Um, and are we not more susceptible to the, to the very party house situation? That, that this whole thing was, you know, that, that kicked off this, this whole uh ban in the first place. Um. There are the, there are the impacts to the neighborhood and there are the impacts to the city, all of which are still in place, um, all of which did come with, so often come with short term, short term rentals. Um. So those are my thoughts. Would anybody else like to, to weigh in? Michael?
Sure. Um, first, I wanted to thank the staff for being so diligent in protecting uh the residents of Calabasas from nuisances caused by short term rentals. Um, but I don't think short term rentals and party houses are the same thing. I want, I think party house is a subset of short term rentals. And personally, I would have no problem granting an exception for a senior aged fifty five. Um, I, I, I've mentioned before, when, when we were talking about the housing element and the staff gave us that choice between bad and worse. I said, you know, there are other opportunities out there and one of them is to adopt an ordinance like Malibu's uh new short term rental ordinance, which they just adopted a couple of months ago. The, the difference there is that anybody who does, who has a short term rental has to get a permit. Without a permit, they cannot rent a room out or, or, or rooms out. It requires the presence of the host or the owner. Um, it's subject to the transient occupancy tax, the T O T tax. I think in Malibu, it's fifteen percent. I don't know what it is here. But um it, it doesn't reduce other T O T revenue because people who stay in these kinds of places in a, in a, in an Airbnb uh are not business travelers. There, it's not gonna reduce the number of rental units either. Um, it could reduce the student housing. I agree with Maureen on that. I, I just think it's also a good way to restore the lost T O T, the lost transient occupancy, occupancy tax revenue that we're going to see for up many, many years because it, it just may never return to pre pandemic levels that the amount of business travelers here. But I guess, I, I guess I'm stressing that the difference is Malibu just allowed it. You know, why is Malibu allowing it? Because they have a permit. They are controlling who can go there. If you don't, if, if you're causing any of these nuisances, you lose your permit. So I think that's what, that's what I would go. Certainly grant uh Mr. Neuer's request uh at a category for that. And I would grant it for all short. I think, I think the council kinda went overboard in a way because that's all we saw with these party houses. They, they're the ones that make the news and, and, and cause all the, the mess and the, uh, uh, and stress to everybody who lives here. But somebody just renting out a room for a few days, um, there's probably no issue at all. So especially a, a house like his, which has several bedrooms, plenty of parking and so forth. So I think if we had a permit program like Malibu's, we could do it. That's just my thought.
John?
I'm, I'm in general agreement with uh Vice Chair Harrison's comments. And the reason I brought up bed and breakfast is it seems to me that there's already been a policy decision that properly regulated um rentals of rooms uh are on a short term basis are appropriate. Now, you have to look at the zoning and you may have to amend the zoning to uh provide this, this opportunity for Mr. Neuer type situations, but uh, you know, you can call it what you want, but the bed and breakfast is this thing that we're talking about, except for the zoning issue. And it does require a permit like Michael has just said Malibu does. Um, I do have uh specific uh evidence where I've had friends who in, in places that do allow, allow short term, have wanted to rent a room for a night or two because they're visiting a kid. They don't wanna spend the money for a hotel. Or someone's visiting because they're giving a lecture at Pepperdine and they wanna spend a, a night or two in a home again as opposed to uh rented some very expensive hotel in Malibu or here. So there is a, a value now. I, 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 so I think there's a need and not just for seniors to make money. I mean, I think there's a real practical need. How much does it interfere with the uh T O T at hotels? That I don't know. I doubt that it's gonna be significant for the reasons Michael has articulated. Um, I, and I, and I don't really wanna go just say, well, Mr. Neuer's request is okay. Let's make an exception for him and similarly situated people. But I do think it's something that, that we in the city council can study to see if there are the appropriate circumstances and regulations permitting regulations to allow for this kind of thing. The party house, I agree with Michael, the party house nuisance um is a, a problem, but it's, it's not equal to short term rental. It's a, it's a nuisance, like all kinds of nuisances have to be regulated. But you don't throw out the baby with the bathwater when there's an otherwise legitimate need. So I think it's something that um uh can be looked at, regulated, permitted. Um, and that we ought to, ought to think about that and look at other cities that have done it successfully. Those are my thoughts.
I have a, I have a question. Um, the the ban on advertising uh for short term rentals was deemed necessary because of enforcement issues and enforcement problems. Uh, if the door is opened partway under limited circumstances to short term rentals, how do you then determine? How do you then use the advertising ban? Um. To get at, to get at the people who are inappropriately, and, and, and quite frankly, it's not just the people, it's not just the owners of the property. Um, sometimes you have for lack of a better term, bad owners. And they're renting out their property on a short term basis constantly to problematic short term renters. Then you have owners who have all good intentions. But they get people in who wreak havoc. And this can create a real problem in, in neighborhoods, you know, in, in our residential neighborhoods that is gonna be very difficult, if not impossible, to stop. Uh, especially if we don't have the accompanying, we, we how do you have an accompanying ban now on, on advertising?
Well, I don't think you can. And, and Malibu, but Malibu's doing it fine. So I think we need to look at what they're doing and if we have a permit.
It's Matt, how long has Malibu had it in place that, that we can, we, we can, we can assess that they're doing it fine?
I think since January. But remember, it's all permitted. You can't, the owner has to be there, the, and, and you know, has to stay there. They rent out a room. It's not, there are limits on what they can do. And it, and, and, and the money goes to the city, the transient occupancy tax, so.
I understand that. Maureen, yes.
Um, one of our challenges um that I neglected to mention is uh when we do have situation similar to what uh is being discussed here, a simple room where you rented to somebody who's just coming for the weekend, things of that nature. Uh, one of the things we get is complaints about disruption groups coming at night. Oh, um, you know, Mary and Bill are in town and they're staying in Calabasas. Let's go over and visit them. And so even though it's just a room in a bed and breakfast house, there can be uh a calls that we get from those little events, those little parties, not that they couldn't occur in anyone's house. But, but then you get, um, what would I say, a kind of watching that goes on by neighbors from that point on forward. And um, and we have, remember in this city, we have one full time code enforcement officer for over nine thousand occupied structures.
But there's a simple solution. You just revoke their permit. You just revoke their, yeah, you just revoke their permit though if they have a problem once or twice. I mean, you put that.
So, so when you open up, if I, when you open up your city, I would tell you that I cannot take on a new regulatory oversight for that much activity without additional um uh, uh, support, staff support. So yes, you might be taking in a tax of some sort. But I would doubt that the tax you're taking in is going to be enough to cover the costs of the program um as well as the staffing that you're gonna get, especially on weekends.
I think you have to look and see what Malibu does. How, how, right. I think, I think that's legitimate. You have to look and see how much does it cost for Malibu, for example, to enforce it? And what kind of revenue they get?
Well, and there has to be more than Malibu. There has to be
Oh, there are, yeah.
Many cities that have done this. And if they're all doing it poorly and it's really hard to regulate and it really takes lots of resources, then yeah, we shouldn't go down that route. However, if there are similarly situated cities like us that do it successfully, um, I, I don't understand from a policy perspective why this is an uh not a good idea.
I could jump in.
Hold on, uh, Matt, you had something to say?
Yeah, let me answer the legal question. And well, there are two legal questions there. One is the ad ban still remains useful. City of Palm Springs has a rather robust vacation rental regulatory program, as one might imagine. And one of the tools they is they require every ad to list the number, the permit number. So their enforcement team goes and on a regular basis goes to, you know, Airbnb Palm Springs and looks at all the ads. And any ad that doesn't have permit number listed, that's a violation. And every ad that does have a permit number, they check it and make sure the permit's still valid and, and that provides a tool. Um, the other tool that Palm Springs has developed and has been adopted by most cities that have adopted a short term rental ordinance is a, they're called good neighbor policies and you require um every owner to agree to its terms. And generally, they're sort of a common sense set of rules that must be complied with by renters. So no loud, in Palm Springs, for example, is no loud music uh after ten, load, no loud noise after ten P M that is, and no amplified music outside the residence. So it blocks people um putting boom boxes or these days little, little Bluetooth pills at the pool. Um, and it also includes a requirement that every owner for a property give a phone number for a local contact who can report within thirty minutes to everyone who lives with it, to all the residences that surround each permitted house. The intention being to divert the first line, line of calls away from the police and over to the uh, that local contact. Now, you know, it's obviously residents still call the police and that can be a challenge, but it gives the police a tool. It also has a provision that if you have, I think, three or four calls for service from the police department, um, then your permit's revoked for a period of time. So it sets sort of a good neighbor, bad neighbor, good neighbor, follow the pro, follow, follow the policies and you're okay. Bad neighbor, cause problems and you're booted out. And then they're fairly robust in enforcing the prohibitions against properties that wildcat it. Because one thing to bear in mind is that there are, there will be owners, if the city, I mean, they try it now and the city has a robust program of shutting it down as they pop up when residents get complaints like the party houses we've seen. But there will be folks who will rent outside the rules and that continues to to take some enforcement resources. So to sum it up, the ad ban does remain useful because we would amend it if the council and commission were to adopt an allowance for short-term rentals. We'd amend it to require that any ad lacking a permit is prohibited and any ad lacking the the permit number is prohibited. And as to other cities, most cities in desirable parts of California have faced this same question over the last five, 10 years. And there's a litany of ordinances that have been developed using a variety of models. Some use the Malibu model, which is called hosted vacation rentals, where you require the property owner to be on site. A number of others, you allow the whole house rental, some allow both, and they're hotly litigated. And the usual debate is exactly the situation we're seeing tonight, where there's this focus on, is it good for residents to monetize their houses? Or is it better to allow existing residents to have quieter neighborhoods? And that's the policy choice. I leave to the council and commission. Thank you.
I see administrative nightmares on both sides of this issue. We use the term owners. So I want to rent my house. Do I have to come down with my tax bill to show I'm the owner? What if I am legally renting the house and I want to rent a room? Can I do that? On the other side, seniors who may be renting this are trying to make some money on the side. They don't want their public record of this. They don't want to report it on their taxes. It's crazy. It's not as simple as it seems. And you need to consider that.
Thank you. Any, Michael?
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to address Commissioner Mueller's comments regarding bed and breakfast. Our code does contemplate bed and breakfast, but keep in mind that because the code was adopted around 2010, it predated Airbnb or the prevalence of VRBO and Airbnb. And so I pulled up what the definition in our municipal code is for a bed and breakfast. And it reads that it's a commercial facility facility designed to appear as a single-family dwelling with one family in permanent residence where bedrooms without cooking and cooking, individual cooking facilities are rented for overnight lodging. It does go on to say that this does not include hotels and motels, which are separately defined. And so the point there is that our code contemplated bed and breakfasts, but they contemplated it as an actual commercial facility. And so for that reason, it limits them a bed and breakfast in commercial zones and within the residential zoning areas, only within the rural residential and the hillside, mountainous and the PD zones, which all of those require larger lots, one acre to 10 acre minimum lot sizes. So under our current code, a bed and breakfast is completely prohibited in a residential single-family zoning district. And so I think that was the intent was to keep that that transient use outside of the residential neighborhoods. So I just want to make sure that that I raise that so that we're not confusing that with Airbnb, which is taking a single-family home, one that has not been designed as a commercial facility and turning that into something that would then potentially be rented out.
I think John and I are old enough to know that there were homes that rented out rooms that were called B and Bs. I've stayed in them in Europe, for example, and they're not commercial facilities at all. They're at, so it's, it's just our municipal code definition, but it's not the original definition.
I'm not saying that that's the general dictionary definition, but as the code was adopted, it identified bed and breakfast as a more commercial facility, not a residential facility that happened to be rented out to multiple people.
I was trying to make an analogy, that's all.
All right, Dennis, do you have any comments?
I have a couple of issues. Number one, after the presentation review this evening, it seems to me we have an awful lot of opportunities to make money by using your home. And certainly appreciative of what the single-family residential constraints may need to be in order to anticipate the kinds of effects that I that we originally made the party house movement about. But a couple of things from personal experience, I've seen folks troubled by what happens when you bring somebody in who's alcoholic or into substance abuse in one way or another. And you know, a homeowner is not in a position to deal with that kind of thing, other than not to rent again. But if you, if you have a difficulty like that, it may be an exception. And I know that Airbnb and VRBO, they, you know, they actually ask for a rating on the renter, but that's usually after the security issue has arisen and they either resolved it or they had to have law enforcement come out and actually get the people out of the place if they're drunk or stoned or whatever. I think that's an issue that may be rare, but it is increasingly anticipated threat, it seems to me. And particularly if we got 9,000 folks who, if only 1% of those folks is, you know, 90 homes that are in that business. If they can't see their way to make it with any of the other options that we've allowed, it seems to me that we're being a little naive ourselves in figuring out that, you know, a homeowner renter, I mean, or landlord, you know, can manage the circumstances. So I would certainly recommend that the city council consider the issues of security. And frankly, the the lack of, you know, code enforcement staff and the ability to pay for, for our code enforcement staff in the city. If we have another person come on board, it's going to be an $80, $100,000 a year expenditure on the city. So we have to have a permit system that helps us recover some of those costs. And I guess we would figure that, you know, some of the TOT that we may collect would be offsetting, but that's a major administrative nightmare. I'm hoping, as Michael does, that Malibu has figured this out and can, you know, give us some ideas if their permit system is a way to deal with it. But that's what our current set of permit or legitimate uses allows. I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Neuer. I can imagine that that's important for him to have the additional resources. But we don't stop him from doing a board and care or bed and breakfast or, you know, 30-day rental, because 30-day rental is a reasonable rent and security, I guess, comfort or or security blanket for me, just experiencing the things that we have in the city along the way. Security, having a number of things already in place. And since we're recommending to the council, I think that they'll probably study the various concerns that each of us has raised and deal with it accordingly, because it's going to require a revision of the ordinance. So I think that the presentation this evening is important. I think our citizens, you know, should be alerted by virtue of this educational opportunity. Hopefully, some of the folks who care are watching the show tonight. So let's hope that the dialogue improves all the way up the line to the city council.
Thank you, Dennis. Daniel, do you have any, any comments?
I was just thinking, if, you know, the party house is kind of one extreme, which obviously we wouldn't want to have, but if someone's following all the ordinances and I think it's a great idea to have a permit to be able to rent out short-term. But I think if they abused it or they weren't following the rules, they would lose their permit and they wouldn't be able to rent their house out short-term again. But if they were following all the rules, I personally don't see a problem with it for short-term.
Thank you.
Question for Michael and the other attorneys chiming in as well. So I'm a, I'm a senior and I want to rent a room. What safety equipment do I have to put in bathrooms, in the stairs, what have you? What liabilities am I exposing myself to?
I can take a first stab at that. And the answer would be, as any renter or any, not renter, the other one, landlord, you have an obligation to provide a safe premises. And if you, and that's going to be tested by the building code and the civil code habitability standards. So it'll fall upon the homeowner to make sure that if this is, goes forward, that they're renting it safely and that they are providing appropriate facilities for their, for their renters to use.
But I think keeping in mind, I'm not sure if, if someone who wants to do a short-term rental in their house has to go through our building and safety department. So that, again, gets back to some of the other points that we were making is that if you operate a hotel or a bed and breakfast, you actually have to go through building and safety and meet certain building code requirements for safety exiting and handicap facilities. But Airbnb, you don't have to. And again, that's not saying that that that's to sway anyone one way or another, just making sure all the information is out there so that we're all aware of what, what a short-term rental really looks like.
And, you know, I, I do want to say that a lot of the, a lot of the discussion has focused on the homeowner, the landlord, so to speak. And my concern is always, you know, the homeowner, there's a certain amount of accountability. They own there, usually they live there. There's no, and let's, let's set aside the party house situation. Just the very nature of a short-term renter, of people coming in and out for a few days, for a week, for a couple of weeks. There's really no, there's very little, if any, accountability. And that's where a lot of my concern lies. I've seen some, I've seen some pretty disastrous circumstances and for the homeowners. And things can go south really fast. And it's, it's easy to say that, okay, you know, if they're not complying, we'll pull their permit. Well, I, you know, very often it's not, it's not the homeowner that is the, that is the problem, that is the issue. They don't always know what they're getting into. And Airbnb and, and VRBO, they have, you know, they have certain things in place to try to, to limit how badly things can go. Doesn't always work. And, and often it doesn't work. And you're, and you end up with neighborhoods with, with, with trash issues, with noise issues, with parking issues. All kinds of things go on. So that, that is a concern to me. John?
Just one other comment. I won't belabor this. I think it's important to try to understand whether or not there are 100, 200, 500 Mr. Neuers out there. I mean, this seems to me, we're spending a lot of time talking about a, an issue that was raised legitimately by one of our residents and we should be discussing it, but there's no real demand for this in our city. We haven't had lots of people asked to do this. Then maybe we are making the mountain out of a molehill. There just is, you know, why do all this if there isn't the demand?
Good point. I mean, Malibu, it's the beach. It is a natural vacation spot for short-term renters. Marine, you had something?
I was going to say, I've, I've gotten a number of calls that come in from realtors. And the question that the realtors have is whether or not that it's not allowed use in the city. And the basis of that is that they have investors, people who want to just buy a house and have short-term rentals of the house. So it's investment property and they'd like to be know, they'd like to know if it can be used in that way. And this is not just one or two a year. This might be 20 a year in that neighborhood. So there are, there is a commercial interest to use properties in that fashion. I agree that having somebody as a resident at home does, would play a role if that was to be pursued. The other thing I'll note that I also didn't mention is when people report bed and breakfast to our code enforcement staff, most of the time they say, well, we noticed strangers in the neighborhood. One of the things that happens in a residential neighborhood is you know your neighbors. And suddenly you have people that you don't know who are coming and going and coming and going. And we have certain neighborhoods that are, what would I say, perhaps more protective neighbor groups. And so it's very disruptive when you see a bed and breakfast in its, not a bed and breakfast, but a short-term rental in these communities, because that's what the, that's what neighbors are noticing, different cars, different people. And perhaps people that don't look like the community look. So there are pieces of this that certainly I would say are awkward fits from some of the complaints that we receive.
Thank you. Dennis?
Several other issues that are kind of mine. You know, we've been struggling as a community to deal with, I guess, affordable housing goals and imperatives that we have to face as well. And it's my understanding that a, you know, building an ADU for a 30-day minimum rental is actually a qualified affordable housing unit potentially. And that would be something I would encourage the council members to think about. I'm also concerned about the impacts of, I guess, the, just the circulation of members of the rental community that are trying to get through the gated communities as well. I think we have 50 gated communities in, in town. And I can imagine that if someone is trying to get the gate guard at the Oaks to let me in so I can get to my Airbnb commitment, that's going to be a long time, you know, making the phone call to the owner and all those folks as well. So their minor inconveniences in a way, but they, they should be considered by the council in terms of what the impacts might be on particularly HOAs that are in gated community, but probably every HOA.
Can I just interrupt for a second, Dennis? Because I can answer you on that. In my HOA, which is like the second largest in Calabasas Park, it's prohibited to have rentals less than 30 days. So I imagine in the Oaks and all of the HOAs that are gated, they don't allow them. So it's kind of moot.
Well, it might be that tempest in a teapot that John is talking about.
Yeah, well, at least for, yeah, for the HOAs, I think it's not really an issue so much.
But I think that the more critical issue is really, we should be encouraging anybody who wants to make revenue off of their current property and they're eligible for an ADU and the city meets its housing and housing affordability potentially goals or imperatives. And, you know, we've got to build some 200 out of our 353 affordable units in the next six, seven years. Raina cycle. So this bears on that because it could be that folks, if they have the ability to make their income off of the Airbnb or VRBO type of operations, they're going to wind up, you know, making it more difficult for us to try to solve our longer-term and for housing affordability and workforce housing, you know, objectives and the imperatives from the state. And who knows what the state's going to do to us next on top of all.
And Dennis, to, to address that to a certain degree, there is lots and lots of data out there. There is no question that any given Uh, there is no question that any given property uh that is intended for rental. Um, the potential income from short term rentals is significantly more. Uh, we're not talking about a little bit more, we are talking about significantly more than traditional, traditional rental income. Um, and which is what makes it very attractive to investors. Uh, and um. If a property is converted from a traditional rental property to uh short term rental. That takes, that takes away from uh the available stock, as you mentioned, uh, for, for meeting our requirements.
If I can just conclude my, uh, my thought on this matter, and that is that, you know, again, it's not ours to do. It's the city council. For them to deal with. And we've been relatively exhaustive in our commentary. Uh, if there's more that we have, we should put it on the, you know, on the whiteboard so that, you know, they can deal with the various issues that we've raised. From our personal and our professional and our commission experiences.
Yep, Marine?
And I'll just add one last piece to um, Mr. Washburn's comments about ADUs. There is a program in place today for individuals like the petitioner, senior uh low income or disabled. In which the city has set aside half a million dollars to assist you in building either an ADU or a junior ADU. So um, those uh, that extra bedroom in the back, maybe with a closet could be converted into a junior ADU. For the petitioner using that as a funding source with very low interest rates. Um, and uh possibly yield a longer staple, perhaps a safer benefit. If you speak about the interactive pieces of being a uh mini hotel owner. Um, for individuals um, to be able to enjoy income off their house. So if anyone has an interest in that program, uh, please contact the city, can contact myself. Or Ron Ayers, who's our CFO, but us uh are aware of the program. It uh has not had broad use. We encourage anyone qualified to approach us. Because we have money that we can make available to help you generate income so you can stay in your home. That is a policy goal of the city to agent place to stay in your home. And that is an important program. Put that extra uh bedroom to work or two. And uh, we can help there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, if, if I can just add one last thing, and our CDG, CDBG, you know, our community development block grant program. Does help also deal with ADA compliance as well as the convenience and um, and safety of. The interiors of homes, uh particularly for uh those who are of either low income or. Um, you know, senior category folks. So that's another source of funding that would allow someone like Mr. Neuer to actually equip their home with help from the community. Because we've set up funds for that very thing.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, as, as Dennis said, I think we've, we've been. Pretty, it, it, pretty thorough in the comments and uh. A lot of, a lot, a lot of good ideas have been advanced for the, for the uh city council to consider. Uh, the question is, do we want to send a recommendation to the city council or do we want to? Uh, let them, uh, let them hear what, all the varying, the varying uh thoughts that have been presented tonight. I, so I guess the question is, is there, would it be a motion to send a recommendation to the council?
Matt, can you help us with that?
Uh, I mean, obviously the commission is not of one mind, so it would be somewhat difficult to structure a motion, but. Those who are in favor of studying the ma- matter further could make a motion that the council direct staff to study. Uh, a possible ordinance that would allow uh, a possible ordinance to allow. Short term rentals on whatever parameters you might propose. Those on the other side might offer a motion that the council declined to study the matter further and maintain the existing prohibitions. It would be beyond my role to offer one between those two.
I kind of like the motion that you first suggested, but based on, I mean, but I don't have the parameters. Malibu, Palm Springs, you mentioned a lot of good ideas. And then there's a lot of concerns that the commissioners have, so I think it all has to be presented.
If the, if, if the commission wanted it to be evaluated further, then the motion would be to direct, recommend that the council. Direct staff to evaluate options for a short term rental ordinance. That would be a.
Oh, I love.
I, I, you know, I, I would be, I would be comfortable with a, a recommendation to the council. That they, that they view this meeting. Uh, thereby hearing all the different, all the different viewpoints, all the different ideas. That have been, that have been put out there tonight. Um. Rather than.
I would make that motion, Wendy, uh, but I would uh add that it, it, it should be with a, an overview of. Subject matter uh that staff, you know, could compile from what we've said, but. The, the visibility of our comments, I think, would be um, more important even than the summary. So I wouldn't want to burden the staff with having to uh try to interpret and accurately, accurately reflect everything, but deal with the. Larger concepts that have been raised and encourage the council members to uh view the meeting. And we should probably cut it short so it didn't take them so long.
Yeah.
So I'll make that motion that we send um, you know, uh, the recommendation. Yeah, with a brief or at least an appropriate summary by staff, but with the recommendation that they look at the. Um, comments of all the commissioners at this evening's meeting.
We have a second?
I'll second.
You, all in favor?
But I'm still confused. That, that's just to, you want us to, the council just to look at the meeting? I mean, you're not even going to make a summary of all the points?
I don't know that. I, I thought that that's the way I phrased it, Michael, but um.
I.
It would be to watch the meeting. And uh, review a, a staff um compilation of the, of the main points that we've made.
Okay.
Including all those that each of us commissioners have made, so.
Okay, okay, okay. I, yeah, okay.
That's the way I understood it, Dennis.
Okay.
All.
Wait, Bob has a question. But he's, he's muted though.
You, you need to unmute.
Could staff prepare an edited version of the meetings or just the discussion, commissioners discussions? And any other, the staff discussions are heard? They don't have to go through the presentation? You know, the PowerPoints, what have you. Make it more reasonable for them to review it.
We certainly can. We've done that before. We've referenced a point in the Greticus tape. That we would recommend that they watch from this point on forward and advise the length of that time.
Oh, an excellent idea. Um. Dennis, I, you want, you want to.
That's what I expected. I didn't think that they needed to see all the uh, the preamble that we saw. Because they, they've already seen or directed that it'd be done.
So does everyone have a, an understanding of the motion that's on the floor?
Hopefully the staff does.
Wow.
Marine, you have a good, you have a good uh.
I, I do, and I uh, I, I concur in the red back recommendation. I think it's a good one. It's a broad issue. It's a complex issue. It isn't easy. It has pros, it has cons, and it has no easy uh, uh, comprehensive approach at this time.
Do you also check on Palm Springs and Malibu and see how much it costs? I mean, because that's a concern that the staff has. Or, or, or it actually, maybe it even generates revenue. I don't know.
All right, we, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, all in favor?
I.
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 Closed? All right.
I think, I think though that uh, Michael's suggestion is a good one. We should get the Palm Springs and the um, and Malibu ordinances and just forward them. I'm sure staff, you know, is planning to do that anyway.
And, and what we'll do is we'll wait for council direction as to whether or not staff wants to proceed and we'll keep you updated.
Thank you. All right, I, we're on to the director's report. Marine?
Thank you. Our, uh, your next planning commission meeting will be on May twentieth. Uh, you have two home additions. And then after that, we tentatively have the lakeside overlay coming back on June third. Uh, we'll see whether or not we can give you a little break and combine that discussion with uh, items for June seventeenth. I realize that uh, we're entering holiday season, so if you have a holiday break. That you're planning on taking, please let me know. Just send me an email and we'll get that into the docket to see if we can. Work to uh, condense meetings and simplify the processes as we move into the summer months. I want to mention that West Village is going to the city council on May twelfth. Um, that was the only scheduled meeting at this time. However, the mayor has asked the city clerk. Uh, to hold a second tentative date, which is Monday, May seventeenth. So that has not yet been advertised. If the uh, council requires the second meeting. We will modify signage to alert the community to that meeting. Uh, but that meeting is uh, being held uh, by the mayor and the city clerk at this time. So. Um, plan, if it goes to a second meeting, it'll be Monday, May seventeenth.
Are we allowed to speak at that meeting or is that pro boat and Matt?
Because the project may return to the planning commission, depending what the council acts, my recommendation will be that the planning commissioners not speak at the city council meeting. Of course, welcome to attend. Uh, and it will be a Zoom meeting.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
All right, I, does anyone have uh, any reports? Anything else?
Just wish every mom a happy Mother's Day again.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I, then I, we. I always, I always wonder whether we need a motion to, to adjourn.
So. With an individual roll call.
With an individual roll call.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
Seconds, we can say good night.
All right.
Good night.
Good night, Grace.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks all.
Bye bye.